Welcome to the December 10, 2014 Planning Board Meeting in Town of Raymond. The board has come to order. The board does have a farm. Phil Bobal.
Steve Linn.
Greg Foster.
Rob O'Neil.
Bruce Stanford.
Benjamin Crowder.
And with us this evening is Jim Seymour as our town planner and Chris Hansen is our code enforcement. And Danielle will be taking our minutes. This is a public proceeding and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are presented. Please note to the chairman, if you are unable to hear or to see. The board marks for a published agenda and will be considering tonight's items in the following order. We've got some minutes from the November 12 meeting and then a public hearing for an application, followed by supportance workshop and some communications, planning communications. In each instance, the burden is upon the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the provisions of the applicable ordinances. After the board votes on the merits of each project application, it will prepare a written notice of decision. Because the notice of decision may substantially affect any appeal rights and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting with regard to a specific project not leave until the board has completed its discussion on the project. Generally speaking, appeals from adverse decisions must be filed with the appropriate appeals board of superior court or otherwise provided by law within 30 days of this board's decision. Also, to be certain that you preserve your individual rights to file any such appeal, you must be certain that this board records evidence of your appearance this evening in opposition and the basis of your opposition. While persons speaking, including representatives of the applicant and members of the public, are asked to stand, state their names from the podium, address, give their address and the affiliation with the project. You must sign a sign-in sheet if you are speaking for or against a project. All persons speaking shall address the chairman. So we'll start with the minutes from November 12.
I will move the minutes.
Second.
Are there any discussions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? All right, next up is our public hearing for the Jason Farling. We'll start with Jim, if you give us an overview of the project. And then, I'm assuming you're Jason?
Yes, I am.
And then we'll go to you, and then we'll open it up to the public. We take phone-ins also, so we... No, I'm only kidding.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just want to point out that this project was previously approved in 2004 for the private way. What we have here is a private road which the applicant, Hurlough and Donna Mattson, wish to extend such that they can do a lot division and create an additional lot. To do such, they need to extend the right-of-way in the road approximately 76, 77 feet. The applicant has prepared a minor site plan application. The lot that they are splitting is approximately 8.64 acres located in the R-zone. And if you look on the plan that you have, you'll see that they've included on the lot that they are creating a basic home layout. Because this is a private road extension, we do get into a little bit of the... It's not a subdivision review, but we need to look at the lot being accessed from the private way. So therefore, we ask that we look at the septic system. We look at the stormwater for both the lane and the lot. And the applicant did provide us with a stormwater management plan, which was consistent with our credit point system and met the standards for that. I did include a memo, I think it was dated December 3rd tonight. I gave you an updated as the applicant has presented us with revised plans. I believe that he has addressed all of my comments with exception of one. And that is, they are requesting a waiver. This development or private road had a hammerhead terminus. Due to the extension of the road 75 feet, thereabouts, that hammerhead would be non-conformant with our current road standards as it would be too far from the terminus. But we recommend they get a waiver. I have talked to David Mains and he is satisfied that that will be fine for HRTC access. So my recommendation is to grant the waiver, but obviously you'll have a discussion on that. The waiver needs to be put on the final plan. And then I had one condition, which is often a common condition on these private roads or backlots, which is that prior to any occupancy, we'll need to have proof that the road maintenance agreement has been signed or notarized by the development such that they're part of the road association and maintenance will be upheld by either them or an association. So I would let this time let the applicant speak. To date, we have not received any public comments. But clearly, they can speak for themselves.
All right. The board, any questions? All right, Jason?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thanks for hearing me this evening. My name is Jason Farthing. I'm with Survey Inc. out of Windham, Maine. Jim pretty much covers it here. But Hurlough and Donna Mattson contacted me some time ago with the hopes of dividing their 8.73 acre parcel of land that's at the terminus of Autumn Lane, a private road that's a half mile or so up Gore Road off of 85 here on the left. They're right at the terminus, the T-turnaround there. And in looking at the current zoning, they were roughly 80 feet short of being able to divide it. They've owned the lot outright for some number of years now, so therefore, it's not a formal subdivision per se. But it was just lacking that road frontage to be able to divide the piece. We've worked closely with excellent guidance from Mr. Hansen and Mr. Seymour there to prepare a site plan, addressing all of the issues. It went through a memo process there. Jim was kind enough to send us along his comments after the first initial submission that you received. And there are some changes on the plan. Point out. So this is just its orientation here off of 85 up Gore Road. Parcel is proposed to be divided as shown on the boundary survey sheet one of three that you received. This is basically unchanged, other than the fact that we've added the building setback requirements to the plan. The waiver request is to avoid having to have two T-turnarounds there within about 100 and 120 feet of one another. We decided to address that issue by widening the radiuses and lengthening that existing turnaround there. We're all in agreement that the benefit there would be to be able to get a UPS truck or an occasional moving vehicle, plow apparatus in and out of there easily. So they can pull in and back into that without issue. Our original stormwater plan here also had, you'll notice on the original plan there, had a buffer along the southerly side of the lot here. Jim asked us to regrade that and just put the water down in this substantial buffer down here. Again, we used the point system there to diffuse the stormwater runoff. The roadway itself was a woods road that was already roughed in. So in order to do as little environmental impact as possible, we've utilized the existing center line of that woods road and we just planned to widen that to bring it up to town specifications as far as depths of material and width of the roadway. And you'll notice on the revised plan that we show the widening of the radiuses and the lengthening of the paved apron here for the turnaround. The other item of interest there was the road maintenance agreement. The Hurloughs own, excuse me, the Mattsons own the road in fee. So there is a road maintenance agreement that's been prepared, but it has not been recorded at the registry of deeds to date. So it's all set to go. And like Jim said, prior to any issuance of any occupancy permits, we'll go ahead and get that recorded and get the people along that road involved in that road maintenance agreement. That's about it, if I can answer any questions.
Okay. Well, just as a formality, we'll open it for the public hearing. I'll use the gavel and we'll close the public hearing. And then we'll start.
I have a question. Lot B is partially developed. That building is existing and you're just regrading and adding a septic system? Is that correct?
There was a building permit issued already for the existing lot and this house is probably 70% done or so, I would say. And we did the regrading and the stormwater abatement work here in order to get the road lengthened.
Okay, I was just confused because I thought the lot was undeveloped and you were creating the lot to build a new home and it said existing building. So I was unclear as to whether there was something there now and...
Originally, when they approached me, it was an undeveloped parcel of land and they wanted to get going on building. So they, without the lengthening of the road, they were able to get a building permit on the entire parcel. I mean, it was a buildable lot to begin with. It had adequate road frontage by itself. In order for them to get the division of the 8.73 acres, they're going to need that, a little additional road frontage.
Thank you. So I read that right, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gold star.
Any others?
Of course.
Go.
For lot A, where do you perceive seeing the driveway for any developed house? Is it going to come off the hammerhead?
We would propose it to be rated off the terminus of that hammerhead there.
It has enough room to come off prior to the hammerhead separately.
I'm just wondering if it's truly there for emergency vehicles turning around.
We would specify in that there would be no parking allowed or anything to, you know, to block that right-of-way area there. We would have to come off either the side or the very terminus of that with the driveway and certainly specify that there's no parking or anything to block that right-of-way.
The other thing is you could have it so that that is doubly wide there and that could be isolated from the turnaround too. So it kind of would be a wide throat coming into a very narrow driveway so there's adequate road, is one way to do it. We see houses that it's not an ideal situation because of the... It's a private road in this case and the snow plowing is their duty. The biggest issue usually when you plow the snow, somebody's going to get a load dumped in the middle of the driveway. So that's the biggest, usually the biggest hurdle with that, is winter maintenance.
The lay of the land here, though, is such that you could have this driveway come off of any portion of that turnaround and get out of harm's way, so to speak. It's not steep in any...
Well, I guess what I was looking at is the circle that you got on here for the... I'm assuming that's where you would be looking to build.
That is a requirement to prove that the lot width is there for the town.
I'd just be worried if they built close enough, would they even need a driveway? Would they start using that turnaround as their driveway?
Yeah, you've got probably, 60 scale, you've probably got 60 feet of road frontage to the, if we're looking at this plan, to the left of that hammerhead that they could come off of the driveway.
But that would probably be Chris's issue when they come up for a permit? Someone come up for a building permit?
Yeah.
All right.
They'd have to get an entrance permit, so we'd review that with Public Works. And if there was an issue with the turnaround itself, that would be discussed at that time. We wouldn't issue it unless it was appropriate.
So there are occasions where we meet road frontage with just right-of-ways. And we're not doing that in this case because we're using it, we're using that as the hammerhead.
That's part of their road frontage.
It's part of the road frontage.
It's part of their road frontage?
Yes.
Okay. But I guess what I'm saying is we sometimes...
Sometimes the turnaround is an easement.
Right.
In this case, it's part of the right-of-way.
Okay.
And that's the difference. Some of them bear the right-of-way, some of them are easements. And then we have the capability to do both.
Right.
We typically see the right-of-way when we do a backlot driveway. That can be an easement.
Yes, yep. Okay. Are there other questions? Jim, do you recommend we go through this whole article?
Well, you can go through, as I told you, I did a findings effect draft lead this evening and you can zip through that, see if you agree. As I mentioned, the only condition that I had was for the maintenance agreement. And I've got in there that you...
And the waiver for the...
The waiver. You have to vote on the waiver separately and then you can go through and just either reference this and then date it tonight or however you want to handle it. If you want to wait till the milor actually comes back, it's up to you. I mean, you could read it in and you don't have to sign it until you actually see the milor if you want to do it that way.
All right, let's handle the waiver first, which is, if you're on Jim's memo, that would be the first item on page two. And we have no issues at all with the lot, is that correct, Jim?
Correct.
So is there anyone, did you talk about it? Everyone comfortable with it? Someone want to start us off? So I guess what we're looking for is the waiver to... A 150-foot waiver for the hammerhead? Is that basically it, Jim?
Yeah.
Is that a motion? Yeah, okay. We'll turn that into a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Everybody, all those in favor? No one is opposed? Okay, so waiver is approved. Let's run through, number two, the addition of the road extension. We'll need to confirm the address. Number one, no, that's nothing, right?
Everything else has been addressed in this memo.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So if you go to the actual findings effect that I've prepared, it has the site plan standings.
Oh, you've done, perfect. Thank you, Jim. It's on the wrong memo.
Either you can take, with this one, you can either take it as just one.
We're going to take it as one.
Yeah.
Let's just go through for discussion. So just so we all know, we're on the same page here. We're in the, I'm on page two of Jim's memo that starts out with the procedural history. And on page two, the conclusion of law, site plan review standard. Section A would be the first item is the preservation of landscape. Second item would be the relation of proposed buildings to the environment. Third item is vehicular access. And we don't need anything in here, Chris, to make sure that you're okay with...
No, we're okay.
Okay, okay. Parking and circulation, four parking and circulation. I think that's pretty standard surface. Water drainage, Jimmy, you said we, I didn't see the phosphorus calculations.
They're actually on the sheet.
On the sheet.
On page two or three. Up in the right corner.
Yes, the point system.
It's the points, yes. The points, the points calculation. There are excess of the points required. That's why I referenced this, Article 9, Section U, lots 5B1. And that will be placed, we've kind of, you know, I think we did this with Ross, was the first time we entered these buffers, but we pretty much have adopted that limited forested buffer for the sake of these stormwater buffers so that they can go in and, you know, long as they don't disturb the root mass, they can selectively cut here and there. But it's, it's all defined by the main D P.
Okay. Item six, utilities. Item seven, special features.
Yeah, the only thing I added there was just that road, the turnaround radiuses, they've been, they've complied.
Okay. Exterior lighting, no lighting's proposed. Emergency vehicular access, we've kind of taken care of that. Landscaping, not really applicable. Other considerations from Article 9 standards.
We need to move to accept all.
Yeah, I think we're just going to move to accept the application. I think it's, okay, we'll, which will be all in condition. Jim's even given us the verbiage there.
So I'd move that we approve the minor site plan with the requested waiver for our terminus turnaround with the conditions of approval as noted.
Second.
Sounds good. Any discussion? All those in favor? And opposed? It's done. You're done.
One quick question.
Oh, sorry.
Jim, which plan do you want to have recorded at the registry? Just sheet two of three?
You've got the, I would guess the right-of-way plan itself is on per sheet and it has boundary information, it will have the voice signature, sheet one. The waiver, just put the waiver on both sheets, please.
Waiver on both.
Yep.
And you, you'll just keep those with the waiver in house?
Because, I mean, there's a note on the plan that says it's a plan set.
It shouldn't show the buffer.
And shouldn't it show the point system?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I think you could record both if you wanted to.
Yeah, we think so.
Okay.
Does that boundary sheet show the entire length of right-of-way? I'd like to, for one minor change there, just so everybody has the entire length of that so I can refer to that recorded plan in the road maintenance agreement. I'd like to just add the rest of the meets and bounds to the full length of the right-of-way to Autumn Lane there.
That's fine.
That makes sense.
You're not going to sign it till you have a milor anyway.
Right, that's fine.
And that's the, sheet one is all you're going to have sign? That's the only one I need to have signed by the planning board?
It will be recorded.
By the planning board?
Yep.
Okay.
Right, sheet one will sign, sheets one and two will be recorded. Does that work?
You're going to sign sheet two as well or just sheet one and combine and record them as a package?
Right, we're correct. We'll sign sheet one, record both as a package.
Okay.
We don't need the detail recorded.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
And conditions of approval on both sheets?
Yep.
Okay. The other thing I would mention is the Mattsons probably should get that road maintenance agreement recorded prior to the C of O on the house being built. Would be my preference.
That's exactly what I wrote on my notes here, yeah. Must be recorded prior to occupancy. Yep, great.
All right.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a happy holiday.
Thank you. Thanks for making it easy. All right, so next up is our women's workshop. Stephanie couldn't join us, she would rather go to the kids concert. Can you believe that?
Yes.
They go to the planning board? All right, so we have, we've got four proposed articles to look at. We'll take them one at a time. We're going to send these, from here, they're going to go to returning for review. Then we'll get them back, we'll do the public hearing and we'll send them to the selectmen, either change or through. So this is kind of like, this is our, should be almost our final cut. Because we are kind of out of time. And then where we're going through this, we need to kind of think about when we're going to hold this public hearing. Our next, we would need to do it in January. Our next meeting may get busy with the Fry Island and then with the MGM application. So we may want to, but I'm not anticipating that this is going to draw much attention from the community. So we can tack it on and just knock it out that night because then it's just really going to be...
That'd be fine.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too. All right, so we'll start with the, the Article 10, the site plan review for the town Raymond use ordinance. Jim, do you want to...
Just go through the different pieces?
Yeah, let's just go through the pieces to make sure we're...
Again, just to give you background, the reason that we've put this in there is we get a lot of plans now that come back, you know, with amendments or revisions. And how do we be consistent? Because all we have is really an application for new projects. So to alleviate that, we come up with the site plan amendments and revisions. The four classifications would be de minimis revisions, staff review revisions, minor site plan revisions and major site plan amendments. De minimis revisions would be essentially handled by Chris. Those are the real small construction issues that pop up on the site that are, you know, essentially meaningless, other than they're just a slight change to the plan. There's no substantial impact to anything. Staff review revisions would be more significant, would be kind of like the one we had with David Greep where there was a rotation of a parking space or something like that. It's a substantial change, but in the end, you know, it has no real impact to the environment or to the safety or traffic impacts. That would be handled by staff review, which would essentially be Chris and myself. And of course, with that, if we can't resolve it, we always have the authority to bump it up to planning board. Minor site plan revisions would be those that would be accumulated over a five-year period, such as new additions, you know, buildings, site surface changes that are at or below what are the thresholds for a minor site plan right now under our ordinance. And those would come to you at the planning board. And then major site plans are just that, those that would trip, they're in addition to a building or a parking lot such that on their own, they would trigger normally a full site plan review. They have to meet all the major site plan review standards. And then any plan that hasn't been amended for five years would be treated the same way. Just because after five years, we start losing, you know, our ability to recall what the original approval was. So that's essentially how we broke down the various... Then, of course, the fees would be determined by council. Town, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one question. And on number on B, you say that there's no butter notices are required, but on C and D, we don't specifically call out?
Yep.
Because they fall under the plan reviews, that's already built into...
Okay, so it does fall, okay.
That mechanism's already built.
So we're not kind of setting this aside or...
No, that mechanism's already there under our normal site plan review. Because once they come to the planning board, there has to be public notice.
We okay?
Absolutely.
All right. Yeah, we probably should take them one at a time. Yeah.
And I'd move that we would accept the changes as written and send them to the town council for review.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Sorry.
Actually, doesn't this, isn't this, are we voting to send this to public hearing?
Town council and public hearing, and then we...
Legal review.
Legal review. Then it's going to come back for public hearing. And then we're going to go to...
It's a yo-yo.
Can we help select from the council? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I saw, no, I saw we were...
Okay, all those in favor? That one's done. All right, next one is the town of Raymond Street ordinance.
The agreement.
Plant, 4.2 plant.
The land agreement, that one's pretty good.
We've already actually implemented, we've actually... We've already actually implemented, we've actually already implemented, but now it's just formally in our ordinance.
Okay, so I think we're good to go on this one. Is there anyone having any discussion?
Straightforward, no.
All right.
Again, I'd move to accept this as written and send it to town council for further review.
Second. All the... discussion? All those in favor? Done. Next is our shoreline zoning provisions. Table of use. Oh, actually, this one might... So Jim, tell us one more time what we're doing again when we change parking facilities to parking areas?
It matches our uses that we just did.
Okay.
Currently, we call it parking areas and in the land use as parking facilities. So it's just, again, to streamline the use and the table. And that's the same with the municipal. Again, there's no definition for municipal, but we have a definition for public facilities.
Okay. So we're adding boat launches, we're changing the facilities, we're really making... we're really making no substantial changes to this?
Shouldn't just for the issue of clarity, we should have whatever the designation is under the resource protection shoreline zone on LRR one and LRR two, shouldn't those be noted in those columns? Instead of those columns, a blank, just for their clarity?
Yep.
Under the ones for piers, docks, wharfs, bridges?
No, I think you're saying these should be in here, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. In other words, to the right of paragraph seventeen, the boxes under RPSP and LRR one, LRR two are blank. And I'm just suggesting for the issue of clarity, we should have the correct designation in those boxes.
It just falls down.
Yeah.
No, 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 what he was saying...
He was saying put it in here?
Yeah, but what's the permitting for piers, docks, wharfs? Is that C?
For temporary, it's CEO.
It's just the way it printed out. See, you got seventeen.
Oh, A and... oh, I'm sorry, A and B relate back up to seventeen. Okay.
We didn't get that either.
Subcategorized it, temporary and permanent.
Okay.
Just the way it printed out, I think in the table, it actually... it's a little bit staggered or a little bit indented.
Like inverted?
Yeah. I plead confusion. We plead with you.
I checked, because I got stumped by the same thing too, so don't feel bad.
I think we got it.
Do the same thing with the definitions. And then accessory apartment was the one that you spent quite a bit of time wordsmithing.
All the definitions?
Yes.
New definition of accessory apartment, yeah.
It'll go into...
Anti-agriculture, right?
And that's under a different... that's in land use. The next one, Article nine.
Yeah, Article twelve.
Right now, we're doing...
Article nine.
Right.
Actually, they're still on the table. You haven't worded on the table yet, right?
Right.
Yeah, we're still on the table. Are we okay with the table?
I think so.
Table. For land use table? Okay. Is there a motion?
I'd move that we approve it as written and send it to legal council for further review.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Closed. All right, now the last one, Article nine minimum standards.
Chris, wasn't there a discussion about the percentage of land coverage? It's supposed to be...
Yeah, we changed it from thirty to fifteen to match up with shoreline zone.
That was higher than that.
No.
It was in the old definition.
It was in the old definition. It was thirty percent, but we have a... in the...
Okay, okay.
Remember, we had said in all districts, you couldn't cover more than fifteen percent, so it didn't make any sense. So we corrected that.
Steve, you had one other comment about this, didn't you, when we were going through this?
Had to do with... they corrected it. Would it have to do with the confusion about the bedrooms and the septic system?
Okay.
And that's been corrected.
Change that to match state law.
Yeah, they clarified that, because now they've got the language that the system is already designed for. It's more than one. I think that seems to be adequate.
Very pleased for that. Steve, you see on the back page where it has the definition of accessory apartments, where it struck out that thirty percent?
Yeah, I'm just wondering why we've got the definition in section seventeen and end in... are we defining it twice?
Yeah, so it matches up in the regular land use ordinance with the shoreline zone.
Two different areas.
It's in the ordinance twice, so it's just to make sure it's consistent in both sections.
Okay.
The regular land use and the shoreline zone.
It only appeared originally in the land use ordinance.
So you tighten it up in the shoreline zone, so we had to tighten it up in the land use.
Are we adding that agriculture section, or are we...
That is being added. It was in the shoreline zoning, but not in the land use.
Same ver... same verbiage?
Same verbiage.
We okay with this one?
I am.
Bruce, you all right? Yes, huh, everything's all right. Ben, you wanna do it one more time for us?
Sure. I'd move to accept as written and send to legal council for further review.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor? Pass. All right, that takes care of the warrants. So before we leave it, we okay with going, as far as Danielle goes, we're just gonna schedule this for our next regular meeting. And maybe we'll reserve the option of a six-thirty start if it looks like it's going a bit really tight. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Absolutely.
Steve, you all right with that?
That'd be the public hearing on this.
Yeah.
I have enough people here anyway, but the others...
I don't think there'd be anybody here. I mean, I wouldn't anticipate that we're really changing anything that's going to be of concern. All right, so we'll keep the option for six-thirty start if we need it, and we'll schedule it all for next.
Would we, at that point, be then voting to move it on to town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
So while we move it to select...
Select boards, okay.
I need to take care of it. All right, done. Planner Communications, presentation of staff review approvals.
Yes, we've got... I think you've got one in your packet for Fry Road. It was for a backlot. Chris and I reviewed that and issued that twelve four last week. It was a fairly straightforward application. We had a couple minor conditions on there, and it's all set. I don't know if you need any further... if you want further information, just let me know. It's pretty much self-evident in the...
Yep, they're right up. I think this is great.
Again, it's just... this whole process is just to keep you queued in on what we're approving, so something out there in the public, you're aware of it, as well as firsthand knowledge as far as development in town.
Right, no, I think it's great. I think it moves the projects along faster and keeps the kind of the admin stuff coming to us. Is that right?
And it keeps the cost down for the application and time. Time is, you know, critical in some of these.
Yeah, and for just...
If we can get it done in less time for them, it makes the project go much slower.
Yep, and we get these, so we kinda still have them.
As far as the... is... this doesn't want to actually appear in our minutes. Does it appear in our... on the website? Where does... if someone from the public wanted to know and wanted to read this?
They come to the ops just like they would with the other one.
They come in the opposite, it's in the file.
Okay, but it's not... right, but it's not on the website or someplace else? Okay.
No, just a public document on our files. And with regards... oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, in regards to the findings of fact you have tonight, if there's any wordsmithing or anything like that, let us know, because we'll prepare that to be final when we come back next month to have that plan signed.
Okay. Just that, but the minutes will reflect the presentation, the reference.
Right, but not the whole write-up.
Not the whole write-up.
I mean, that's all we're supposed to be, just general correspondence with you, just again, keep you informed.
Right.
Yep.
Move for Jared.
Second.
All those in favor? Done.